All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the monthly Penfield Public Library Board of Trustees Meeting. This is an open meeting, which is why we are on the Town of Penfield channel. So anybody who would like to watch at home is welcome to do so. And I think we're being recorded as well for posterity sake. So I think everybody who's planning to be here is here tonight. So I am going to go ahead and call us to order. And the first item of business as usual is approval of the minutes from last month. So I wasn't there at the meeting. So can anybody provide a motion to approve? All right. Thank you, Megan. I saw her hand go up. And I had a question about the meeting or the minutes. So before we actually vote, I guess I need a second or before I can raise a point. So it's so thank you, Barbara. Barbara, seconds. Let me see if I can remember. Oh, yeah, it was a question for you, Mary. There was the comment in the foundation about you resigned as your board liaison per recommendation of the town attorney. I know that that was sort of just a past thing that the board, the town liaison, the liaison had to be part of the board and you're resigning from your term. Was that new recommendation? Did we get new information from the attorney or is that just confirming what we had already known?
I think it was new information. He he felt that the foundation and the library board were too closely involved with one another. Now, the foundation, this happened at the end of October. So I don't know what is going on with the foundation, but I believe they were going to talk to their own attorney because they don't think that's correct. But they just asked me to resign. I had to pick one or the other is kind of what the attorney said. Couldn't be on both.
Right. Well, at some point, there needs to be a liaison between them, but maybe it's more like the friends liaison. We're we're not actually a member of the friends. We're just the one who carries information.
Or maybe another thought is the foundation should come and report every few months.
Yeah.
The board.
All right. Thank you. Just since I wasn't part of that discussion, I was curious about that. So thank you. Anybody else, any corrections from the minutes or like me, questions raised by the minutes before we approve them? All right. If not, it's been moved and seconded all in favor of approving the minutes as presented. It's signified by raising your hand. All right. I see lots of raised hands. So that carries. Thank you very much, everyone. Public participation, our public participation is that we are being live streamed on the town channel. So there we go. And communications, Niraj's communications chair isn't here tonight. Anybody else from the committee know of communications to us? Or Bunny and Gail, did you receive any communications for us through the library itself? All right. That's sort of the answer I expect, but you know, I gotta ask. Then we'll move to the town liaison report. So Linda Cole, thank you for joining us this month.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I missed a couple of months. I've been, you know, very busy with some other things. And I've been writing to Bunny and telling her little reports there. I didn't get a copy of the minutes. I don't know what was put in there to.
Yeah, the minutes do include the report that Bunny had read on your behalf from last month.
No, but I usually I usually get a copy of it, but it wasn't sent to me. So I wasn't sure. But not a lot, not a lot's happening because just like you, we're on Zoom, the town board, we're continuing to meet. We'll be meeting on Zoom for the foreseeable future. There's not really any big events, conclusions of committees, account plan, everything else that's still going on. You know, it's starting to snow and then the budget's being touched for ice and ice and snow removal and of the resolutions we've had recently. Tomorrow night, tomorrow night, we're getting a new restaurant, which is exciting considering, you know, the pandemic and so on. That Penfield Hots had gone under. And it was bought by a chicken place. So it's a it's called Chick Magnet and it's a takeout chicken in person. You can sit inside. I don't think they're gonna be open for indoor eating right away. But they had a food truck and now they decided to have a permanent structure where they can have takeout and delivery and so on like that. So that's that's exciting for Penfield right there in the four corners. I really wanted to be here tonight because, you know, I did go through the interview process for looking for our new trustees. But I wanted to be here to say goodbye to the, you know, I've known you guys for a long time. And I think, you know, Chris, I've known you for a long time before you were on this board. And Amy and now, you know, and Mary, Mary's gosh, I mean, I don't think I was a liaison when Mary came on, but I did do, I was part of the interview process as a town board member. And so, you know, we go way back, sitting next to her for years. I'll miss you. And so I wanted to be sure to thank Mary and Chris and Amy for all you've done on the library board. And so on behalf of the town board too, you know, thank you for all you've done.
Well, well, thank you for that personal greeting and on behalf of the town, thank you, Linda. It's been a pleasure to work with you these many years. I guess a question for you. It's been on the news and obviously I've noticed just driving through the news had a thing about the construction being done on 441 and 5 Mile. There's like.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just anything we should know about that?
I don't have any updates. I don't know if it's still progressing. You know, it's not gonna be around about. It's going to be increased lane, I believe, but I don't have the details to to tell you right here.
All right. So I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
I know. It's not a town project. It's a state in New York.
Okay.
New York transportation project.
Any other questions for Linda as the town liaison? All right, then I guess we will move on. Oh, and by the way, Linda, while you're, I hope I hope you didn't mind that I did a little multitasking. I went ahead and sent you the minutes while you were reporting, so. All right, finance reports. So Barbara, if you could please walk us through those. Barbara, I think you're still on mute. Or did?
I was, I was on mute.
There we go.
As far as the overall financial report, I think Bunny did a good job explaining that she has been using surplus dollars from this year to buy things they had for next year to put that into the budget. And the figures look look good. As I wrote to everyone, we had a CD that matured last Friday, December 11th. I got some prices of, not prices, but rates for different CDs and suggested that we go with the 24 month 5.05% rate at Family First. And the thank you to everyone who weighed in on that, which I consider to be a vote. And I did that with the forms are with Gail. And then I went back and signed one other thing that I think, Gail, they're going to send you in the mail. The young woman had forgotten to give me something to sign, so she called me the next day. But one of the great things about working at home is I could just go up there and sign it. And then she was going to do something and it's it's going to be on its way to you. So all the paperwork is now in place and it was much easier since we kept it with Family First and did not have to go from one institution to another. So I think the next one we have coming up is going to be sometime next year.
I like the way that you had phrased that of everybody weighed in and we considered it a vote. We may consider to vote amongst ourselves, but New York State nonprofit rules do not. So we still have to vote officially formally in a public meeting. So Barbara, would you be willing to make that as a motion?
I certainly would after the fact.
Oh, actually, no, I just realized you can't make the motion because it's authorizing you to do it. And so you can't motion to authorize yourself. So would somebody else be willing to make the motion to authorize Barbara to reinvest the CD as she has done? Thank you, Amy. And I see Rachel put up her hand to second. All right. Any further discussion on that? All right. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. All right. I see all the hands up. Thank you. That does pass. We are now compliant with New York State law. So that's, you know, yay for us. So thank you, Barbara, for taking care of that in between meetings and drawing that to our attention. And thank you, everybody, for weighing in and giving sort of the preliminary authorization so we could get that taken care of. There was one other finance thing that Gail had brought to my attention. We had made a decision a couple of months ago to close down our Amazon Smile account so that any Amazon Smile donations would go to the foundation rather than to the gifted memorial fund. However, we got a donation through Amazon Smile in the past month. So although we moved to close it down, I guess we didn't actually do that. So just a question, Gail, Bunny, any of you know, is what do we have to do to to close down that account or to redirect those funds to the foundation instead to the gifted memorial fund? Sorry, Gail, you're muted? Okay. Gail, you're muted?
How much money are we talking about? Could we just send them a check?
We're talking about a relatively small amount. So yes, we can send them a check for that amount. But I think we also just want to shut it down so that we don't have to send them a check on a quarterly basis or an annual basis, right?
Right. I saw the deposit from Amazon in the Family First account statement for November. And that's what called my attention to the fact that we're still receiving donations.
Yeah. Do you recall the the amount?
Yeah, I have it right here. The amount was $22.06 and it was deposited November 12. And I think what we need to find out is how to remove the library from the list on the Amazon Smile site. The foundation is listed when you look for it.
Okay.
So I know that's in place, but we need to remove the library because that comes before the foundation one. So I think people are choosing the library first.
All right, good. So yeah, we can write the check for $22.06 to the foundation so that that money goes over. And then I don't remember who set that smile account up in the first place. Bunny, are you able to look into that and get that closed down for us or have somebody on your staff do it?
I'll look into it.
Okay. Yeah, that way, I mean, that way, we're not sending checks out every once in a while. We can just have that taken care of. So Barbara, it looks like you have a question. Is that?
Nope, I don't have a question. I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So sorry to interrupt the finance report there with that.
I was done. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We do need to approve the finance reports that were presented. Would somebody be willing to move that? All right, Denise and a second. Thank you, Melissa. All right. Any discussion before I call the question? All right. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. All right, that passes. So thank you, Barbara, for leading us through another month's worth of finances. And I don't want to get ahead of ourselves because that'll be coming up later in the meeting, but I think this was your last month presenting that, right?
I think so.
Yes. Although depending on on how committees work out, you know, if the new finance person isn't present, you might get to present on their behalf. All right, back to the agenda. So yeah, that leads us right into personnel. Amy was the chair of personnel. And so we have a couple of things to do, which is to elect officers. And then I think do we need to vote and approve the proposed new trustees for 2021 as well? Yep. Okay. So Amy, do you want to move the positions for the officer slate? Or would you rather have Melissa or Mary do that as the nominating team? I'm sorry, Amy, I can't hear you right now.
All right. Amy, you might have a microphone selected incorrectly. If you go to the mic icon, you can change that.
So while Amy works on that, then I will ask either Melissa or Mary as the nominating team to be the one to nominate the executive for next year. And that does have to be done one at a time. And just as a reminder to the nominees, when you are nominated, you have to abstain for your own nomination. You can't vote on yourself. All right. So Mary or Melissa, are you willing to to be the one to make motions?
Sure, I can do that.
All right. Thank you, Mary.
I make a motion to nominate for president, Barbara Power.
Thank you. Would somebody like to second that, please? All right. So Megan's hand up first. I suppose I should should double check to make sure, Barbara, that you accept.
Yes, I did. Thank you, Chris, for asking.
All right. All in favor of that nomination, signify by raising your hand? All right. That carries. Thank you. Mary?
I make a motion to nominate as vice president, Rachel O'Neil.
All right. Rachel had to step out for a moment. So I hope you had received her approval before nominating her. Would somebody like to second that, please? All right. Thank you, Denise. Welcome back, Rachel. We're right in the middle of voting for you as the vice president. All in favor of that, signify by raising your hand? All right. That carries. All right, Mary?
I make a motion to nominate for finance officer, Narascha.
All right. Would somebody like to second that, please? All right. Thank you, Melissa. All in favor, signify by raising your hand? All right. See lots of hands there. Thank you. And then Mary, one more.
And I make a motion to nominate as secretary, Denise O'Reilly.
All right. And Amy, Amy was quick on the trigger for the second. So thank you, Amy. And all in favor, signify by raising your hand? All right. Thank you very much. We have an executive slate for 2021. So thank you to the four of you, the three who are present and Raj, who couldn't make it tonight for allowing your names to stand and being willing to serve in this capacity or these capacities. Just a reminder to everyone to please send Barbara your preferences for what committees you would like her to assign you to for next year. And then Amy, are you ready now for us to vote on trustees, the new trustees for next year?
I was actually the head of the interview committee. So if you want, I can present on that.
Yes, that would be, that would be fine. Thank you.
Okay.
You're, Amy, are you okay with that? Give us a thumbs up. All right. Thank you, Rachel.
We interviewed the three candidates that we had interviews for. They had, they were each different. They felt fit different demographics and had different skill sets. And after we had interviewed all three, we decided that they were all good candidates. So we are going to present Jennifer McCory, Judy Maranucci and Brett Holly to the town for approval if all of you vote to approve tonight.
All right. Thank you. Just to survey, are we comfortable voting on all three as a group or do we need to do them separately?
I think we could vote as a group.
That's my preference too, but I don't want to override anybody. So all right. So I will take that as a motion from Rachel to nominate all three and to present them to the town. Barbara, seconds. Any further discussion?
May I have the third person's name again, please?
Brett Holly. I will email you the correct spelling of all of their names.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. That is important to get correct. All right. All in favor, signify by raising your hand? All right. That carries. So thank you to the four of you who served on this year's interview committee for connecting with those people and interviewing them and assessing their their qualifications in addition to their willingness to serve. So thank you to the four of you. Thank you, Rachel, for presenting that.
Should I forward their contact information to Gail and Bunny? Bunny, you would usually do the I can't think, the training process.
I need to do an orientation for all three.
Okay.
And I'll update the roster for next year.
Okay. Then I will pass on the recommendation to the town board and contact all of them to let them know that they have been selected.
Excellent. Thank you. Linda, if you're still here, that covers everything for us. Is there anything else we need to do?
No, no, as long as Rachel sends the three names, their addresses to Tony LaFountain or his secretary, you know, and it'll get on the resolutions for the first meeting in January, it'll be all set.
Good. I just want to know, ask, because one year, I think I forgot to send the names and got a like email from you at the last minute like so I just want to make sure that we had it. We were doing everything we needed to.
Yeah, you're good.
All right. Great. Great. Thank you. We ready to move on to the next committee? All right. So next up is strategic planning. Rachel, you're the chair of that. So you get to speak again?
I'm actually gonna first hand it over to Melissa. She's been working with Jim about potential new signage outside. And she'd been in contact with him. So if you have an update for that, Melissa?
So I had met with Jim about a month ago and shared with him our proposed sign to put outside the library building and explained how we had talked to Tony about it. And we were interested in just having a sign that was more visible for people driving by and also when they pull into the parking lot, a better idea of which entrance was for the library. And he seemed receptive to our suggestion and our idea and said he was going to meet with Tony. I heard back from him a couple of days ago and he said that they were, or he was concerned about the cost to produce the signs. So he wanted to know what the board thought about creating a sign that looked similar to the current sign that's at the road, the two post. The two, I think it's wood, but the two post sign that's by the road now and would that suffice? And I shared that I thought we were looking for something a little different just because the two post sign, the way it currently is, is very difficult to read with the colors, the way they are. And he did say that I think it can be whatever colors we want it to be, but I just said, you know, if possible, we were hoping it would be something a little closer to what we had proposed. And he was going to meet with Tony yesterday and let me know what came out of that meeting, but I have not heard back from him yet. So I can update everybody once I hear, unless maybe Linda or Bunny have heard anything else, but.
Yeah, I guess just replacing the same, the sign with the same thing we already have doesn't really make sense. I mean, the point is to make it a little bit larger, a little bit more visible. And that's location size as well as color. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll email everybody if I hear anything, but I have not heard back yet. We had met as a committee with Tony a couple of weeks ago and he had seen our proposed idea and I think agreed that something like that would be nice. So hopefully there's a way we can make it work.
Thanks, Melissa. The other thing that we had been discussing were the barriers for COVID. And the last time that we had met, Chris, you and Melissa had met with staff and discussed creating a task force if we wanted to continue researching and looking at replacing those barriers. And I just kind of wanted to get the board's opinion if we want to pursue that or if at this point in time, now that we have a vaccine on the way, if we are satisfied just continuing to use what we have been using.
So yeah, I apologize that I had to miss last month's meeting. Melissa, did you report on our meeting with the staff at all at last month's meeting?
I honestly don't remember.
I think you had sent it as an email to the entire board, but I don't think that we discussed the task force proposal.
Yeah. So yeah, so Melissa and I met with the staff one of the Wednesday morning meetings. Melissa brought some, I want to say slideshow, which is, you know, really old term because we don't actually have those physical slides anymore. But we set up a laptop and a projector and Melissa shared the different pictures of what things had looked like, some options at other places, some of what we've been talking about. We had a really dynamic conversation with staff. For me, when people participate, it was nice to hear that there was actually some variety of opinion with the staff. You know, some people felt, you know, there were differences of opinion and some people felt more strongly than others. And it was good to have that conversation. One of the suggestions that came out was to put together a task force, whether it's two board and two staff or three and three or something like that and work on a proposal. Unfortunately, you know, I think that made a lot of sense when I heard it back in November. But as Rachel said, things have, you know, we're another five or six weeks down the road. We're into an even greater peak in terms of local cases and vaccines have arrived at the local hospitals as of yesterday and today. So if we did put a task force together, I'm not trying to weigh my, you know, put my thumb on the scale, but it'll probably take that group, you know, they're not going to be there at the holidays. So we're probably going to hear back from them January or February, which means nothing is, we wouldn't actually get it something in place until February at the earliest. So does it make sense to keep, to pursue this and to say, you know what? Even with a vaccine, it's going to be till next summer before we probably are without a max, a mask mandate. Like it is going to take that long to get the full population vaccinated. Does it make sense to still pursue this and have a better thing in place for the last four to six months? Or do we say at this point, we say, all right, we pursued it, we talked about it, but it doesn't make sense anymore. And I'm kind of, Rachel and I traded emails about this this morning, but I just want to kind of get a sense of where the board is at.
Well, since we're going to be starting a new year, perhaps the new strategic planning committee could look at that and make a recommendation at the next board meeting. Because I, I just think that, you know, there's a lot, there's changeover going on. We're going to have new trustees. And I hate to have one group make a decision that the next group that comes in is going to say, really? What were you thinking? Because we've all been there and we've all been stuck with those things. So I don't, I don't have an opinion one way or the other. I would just like to make it a fresh decision.
I think that makes sense. I think especially coming from the perspective of the library and the services that are provided. I do think one thing everybody should keep in mind is that at this point, the vaccine is only approved for people 16 and over. And so in terms of library functions, thinking about all of the children's programming and the teens and things like that, as a library, we may be needing to think about some of those precautions and some of those things longer than some other areas. Because at this point, you know, and even, you know, once it does become approved, I know they're saying, I mean, probably at least 2022 before we're looking at children all being fully vaccinated. So again, not saying anything one way or another. I think what Barbara said makes a lot of sense. But I do think that's something just as a board to keep in the back of our minds. That especially from a library perspective, the vaccine may not be, you know, as impactful as it is in other areas.
Excellent point. Thank you.
I just wanted to share, I mean, I thought when this all started in the summer and we were looking at ideas, the board has already looked into, you know, different options than what's currently being used. And I thought the board was sort of on the same page as to our recommendations. So I'm wondering if at this point, we just turn it over to Bunny and the staff and let them decide, you know, what they think is best for the library. I mean, I think the board, we've already talked about this and we've already researched different options. We presented different options and potential costs. And I just, I don't know if, you know, waiting to present next month will change anything. I mean, I'm just wondering if maybe at this point, we just hand it over to Bunny and the staff to decide what they think is best moving forward.
Anybody else want to weigh in right now? So, I think it does, hearing everybody, there's not a will to make a decision today, tonight, which I think there's a reason we generally don't make big decisions in December because there are outgoing people and people coming in. And so, whether the decision is to make a task force or hand it off to the staff or some other third option that hasn't been talked about, should we go ahead and table it till January and let the new board, as it's constituted in January, make that decision? Does that sound good for everybody?
Yes.
Okay. So, I don't think we have to do that as a motion since it's more, well, Robert's rules, you have to motion to table, but we're not that formal here. So, but I do want to thank, wherever this ends up going, Melissa, you've done a ton of work on this and Rachel as well with the strategic plan. So, thank you for the work. And thank you, Bunny and Gail, for helping to set up that listening session with the staff. I think it was a really important opportunity for the board and staff to get together and, and share ideas and share input. And I did have a couple of staff members come up to me in the weeks since then and thank us for coming. So, thank you for helping to facilitate that. All right. Anything else from strategic planning right now, Rachel? Great. So, bylaws and policies. Mary, we do have a couple of things coming from you if you would like to present that.
The internet safety policy was in the packet, so I'm not sure. Are we ready to vote on it?
So, my recollection is that it was presented in October as though, like, we present it one month and vote on it the next. And then it was again.
This was the one that we had the public meeting for.
Right. And then we had the public meeting and then there was some, some cleaning up of the just grammar and different things. Are we ready to vote on it? It's, it's sort of been on our plate for two months and. All right. So, Mary, as the chair of bylaws and policies, can you make that as a motion?
So, I make a motion to approve the internet safety policy.
Thank you. Would somebody like to second that? All right. There, I see Melissa's hand. Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. All right. I see all the hands. Thank you very much, everyone. That carries. So, thank you for those who wrote it up, for those who did some of the tweaking, especially Barbara. I think you did a fair amount of tweaking on that. And for those who participated in the public forum. So, all right, Mary, you have a second one for us as well?
And the cash handling policy was in your packet, so please look it over. We will be, you'll be voting it in January.
So, that's another where it gets presented one month to be voted on at the next month. Just for our reference sake, is there, are there any changes being made that we should be aware of to the policy? Or is it like we have to?
No.
No. Yeah. So, it's just one of those periodic, we have to approve every couple of years to keep it current, but no major changes to be aware of. So, thank you, Bunny.
No, we find it workable as is. So, there's no need to, to change it.
All right. Good. Right. Let me see where I left my agenda. All right. Sorry, there's a lot of scrolling. There we go. All right. Thank you, Mary, for bylaws and policies. Communications Committee, again, Raj isn't here. Anybody else on the committee know of anything or have anything to report? Nope. Head shaking. And then, Mary, we talked about the foundation a little bit earlier in terms of when I was asked a question with response to the minutes. Anything to report from the foundation?
No, I have no report.
All right. Thank you. Director's report. Bunny, director's report was also sent out in the packet. I don't know if there's anything you want to draw our special attention to or if anybody has questions for Bunny?
I had a question in your stats. You list the circulation and the overdrive. I'm just curious, do you have historical data on overdrive? I'm just curious if you have seen an increase in that.
I have seen an increase particularly since COVID hit, but it has been gradually a very gentle slope up anyway. I can go back and assemble all that historical data for you and generate something for you if you'd like to see that.
That's not necessary. I was just kind of curious if you've noticed a significant increase.
Yeah. As I said, it had been fairly gentle before COVID and then there was a little, suddenly a steep increase and then that's, it's been gentle, gently increasing from that point.
I, I had a question as well, Bunny, more about sort of the county and the library system. I noticed that some of the libraries in the city have gone down to reduced hours again with the current surge. Just curious as to what you, what you've been hearing and anything that you can share of what's going on with the, the city and the county and the system.
It's a town by town decision. Some of the decision, some of the towns have gone to curbside, Chi-Lai and Hocken, and that was entirely under the influence of those town supervisors being, according to the directors of those libraries, maybe an abundance of caution for that. The directors didn't feel it was necessary to back off library services at that point. I have, certainly haven't heard from Tony that, that he would like us to back off to the point of going strictly curbside. The, the city has been very conservative with that. They never completely reopened from the original onslaught of COVID. So, they only ever had about four branches open doing curbside anyway. And then within the last couple of weeks, I guess the mayor decided it was a good idea for them to back right off and, and go to strictly curbside, even at Central. So, again, it's just the decision of whoever's in charge at whatever the jurisdiction is for the library.
Thank you.
We meet weekly to discuss COVID strategy. The directors do. It's always Wednesday morning, late Wednesday morning. And we try to factor in any new information that's come out of any of the health organizations that could influence us. So, we, we try to make it as uniform as we can across the county. But of course, each one is a separate jurisdiction and is, is under, has to be under the, the influence of the, whoever's the COVID guru for each town. And for, for us, that is always the supervisor of the town and anybody he designates. So, we can vary, even though we try to be as uniform as possible.
Yeah. Yeah. No, thank you. I, I just, sometimes when I'm out and about around town, I'll use other people's drop boxes. And I know some of the changes and some of the signs that they put about, about eliminating hours on weekends or all together and doing curbside. So, thanks for giving us a little bit of a window into those discussions at the county level.
Yeah, I'm really trying to maintain as much service as I can and using any excuse to, to maintain as much service as we can safely offer people. But I am also keeping my eye on what we're going to have to do if suddenly things should be considered more unsafe.
Good. And I know Tony's definitely a part of all those discussions too, so thank you. Any other questions on the report or on things that weren't on the report, like? Well, thank you very much, Bunny. Let me scroll back to my agenda. Right. So, any action items, decisions or deadlines for tonight?
I actually.
Oh.
I actually have an action item.
Sure.
Despite the fact that we are operating under very strange circumstances, we do have personnel changes. And we have lost somebody as a desk aide. It's taken us quite a while, probably longer than it usually does to replace that person. Because the agencies that have to perform things like background checks and medical checks are diminished in their staff as well under the circumstances. So, it's taken us a while. But we have selected someone to fill a vacancy in the, at the cert desk. And that young lady is Martha Little. She came very well recommended and we were very impressed when we interviewed her. So, we were glad that she was interested in taking the position. And as we've selected her, I would like your permission to officially appoint.
Thank you. Would somebody like to make that as a motion? I haven't seen a hand yet, but, oh, there we go. Thank you, Amy. All right. I, I only get half of you on the screen at once, so I have to kind of jump back and forth. But it's like Amy's hand first and Barbara for a second. So, thank you. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. All right. That passes. Thank you. All right. Back to you, Bunny. All right. Thank you. Okay. So, the new business yet is to set a date for the January meeting for year-end voucher approval. So, usually we have to meet, this is just a short meeting, like five minutes, to approve the vouchers for the end of December to the beginning of January. Usually, we have a tight window that we have to do that in because we have to get that to the town treasurer. So, Gail, do you know what date Barbara Turturro needs that from us by?
I think she needs it by the seven, but I was gonna see if we could meet on Monday, the fourth. That's the soonest that Bunny and I will be back from the holiday.
Yeah. So, we don't need all of us there, but we do need a quorum. Does that work for, who, who would be able to make it on Monday, the fourth? All right. Amy, Barbara, Rachel, Mary. All right. That looks like most of us. I think it was everybody here except Megan or Denise.
Depending on the time, I might be able to.
Yeah. So, yeah, that's the, the second piece. So, all right. And what time works for best for everybody? I can be a part of it, but I wouldn't be able to do it earlier than five. If you, if you want to do it earlier in the day, then, then I wouldn't be there.
Is this gonna be a Zoom meeting?
It would. I think it would be a Zoom meeting. I don't think we would end up, yeah, we would not want to get in person. As much as we may want to get in person, we don't want to get in person. So, yeah, it'd be a five-minute Zoom meeting and it would not be on the public TV one.
I could do five o'clock. I just can't do 5:30 to 6:30 because I have Girl Scouts, but I can do any time other than that. And Girl Scouts is virtual, so it doesn't matter.
Yeah. So, it, yeah, it's five. It usually takes us five minutes, sometimes 10 if we get chatty. So, is Monday, the fourth at five o'clock work?
Yes.
Yep. See, head, head nodding and thumbs up. All right. Thank you. So, we will do that. All right. And then I'm gonna do this a little, I'm just trying to decide on the order. So, claims payment authorization. It was supposed to be Raj. Raj was not able to do it and was able to get Amy to cover for him for this month.
Can you, can you hear me now?
Yes.
I had to restart my audio and I've been sitting here for 10 minutes. Like, I wonder if it's gonna work.
All right. Would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve payment of the vouchers in the amount of $23,706.13.
All right. Thank you.
Now, I feel like I've been productive.
Yes. Would anybody like to second that? All right. Thank you, Rachel. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. All right. That carries. Thank you much. So, now normally the December auditor is also the auditor for that first January meeting. So, Amy, are you able to still do that?
Yeah, I can do that.
All right. Thank you. And then we have to appoint a auditor for the regular January meeting. It would have been, so, since, since, it would have been Raj at this month. I don't want to volunteer just to push him back to January because I don't know his availability, so.
You can't do it because he's the finance officer.
Excellent point. Thank you. All right. So, who's next up after Shaw? That would be Bowie, looks like. Melissa, are you able to be the auditor in January?
Sure.
All right. Thank you. So, Amy will be the auditor for the January four meeting and Melissa for the regular January meeting.
Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Did I miss anything?
I was wondering, Chris, if Rachel could let me know when she's available to come to the library and sign the voucher list that you just approved. Is that, is that possible to set up a time?
Yeah, I'll send you an email as soon as we're done.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Well, if we are done with official business, usually at this December meeting, we'd have like cookies and lemonade or something to thank the outgoing board members. Linda already took her time to, to thank the three of us, but I want to take a moment as well to, to thank you, Amy. Thank you, Mary, for your years of service. For myself, it was definitely a privilege to, to serve on this board for many years. I enjoyed it. And there's, I, I'm, I'm happy and sad to go. There's part of me that will actually look forward to not having seven o'clock Zoom meetings on a Tuesday night, but also miss working with all of you and hopefully I'll run into many of you at the library. So, thank you very much, everyone. All right. And all the best to those of you who are continuing on into next year and to the new people who will be joining. Can I receive a motion to adjourn? All right. I saw Melissa's hand. Would somebody like to second that? Thank you, Barbara. Any discussion needed on that? All right. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. We adjourned at 7:49. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a great holiday and a good new year.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, everyone. Thank you.
Bye.